All right. Good evening. Welcome to Planning Commission work session for August 24th, Looks like at this time, we'll start right into the work session. And this evening, we'll be talking about Tree Ordinance, Tree City USA, and a review of the Oregon City Sign Code. At this time, we'll turn it over to Pete.
Thank you Chair Powell, and good evening Commissioners. It's good to see you. And this evening, I'll be briefly going over where we are in the Tree City USA application process. As you may be aware, this is a priority of the Planning Commission and the City Commission to try to attain Tree City USA status. So briefly, what I'm going to describe is what Tree City USA designation means. And then we'll discuss our application and the standards for application. Tree City USA is a program through the National Arbor Day Foundation. And its Tree City USA recognition is open to all towns and cities, providing that they meet four basic program standards. To be certified as a Tree City USA, your city does not have to be perfect with every street lined with trees, flawless trees in its parks, a hefty tree-related budget, a titled city forester, and a problem-free tree ordinance. The idea behind the TC USA program is that after attaining certification, your community will continue to improve the management and public awareness of its community trees at whatever less than perfect place it is starting from. And Oregon, that quote is from the Oregon Department of Forestry Application Guide, which you have in your packets. Oregon City has an adopted Public Street Tree Code, which is Chapter 1208 of our code. And we've recently made some code amendments to our existing development codes and those sorts of things. The intent with our tree program this year is for the Planning Commission and the City Commission to evaluate our tree ordinance as we move forward. With, and we were going to look at potentially what it would mean for the city to adopt a comprehensive tree policy, what that would mean in terms of budget and costs and staffing and enforcement options. In the meantime, the attainment of Tree City USA is something which we would like to do to recognize some of the efforts we're already making in our departments to maintain our public tree canopy. So that applies primarily in our streets, parks, and rights of way. And I'll go through what the standards are. Standard number one is that there be a tree board or department. Standard number two is that there be a community tree ordinance. Standard number three is that the city expend at least $2 per capita on forestry programs. And that can include maintenance of existing trees, removal and replacement, public awareness programs, and various other things. There's a variety of things which qualify for those. So whenever there has been a stream restoration project where trees were planted by the parks or the public works department, we were allowed to use those as qualifying expenses as well. So there's a number of things that are outlined in the packet. And I've given you a spreadsheet that we put together with a reporting period of a year from the Parks Department, Public Works, and Planning Departments. And that's what we've been able to gather to date. And we do already meet that expenditure. What the staff is recommending in order to expedite our Tree City USA application is that we have a tree committee and that the Planning Commission serve as the tree committee for the purposes of Tree City USA. And the reason that we're recommending that is because you have all been involved with working on our ordinances over the last two years. And at some point in the future, what we'd like to go through is with you in a separate work session is developing procedures and bylaws for the tree committee. And we're open to any suggestions you have with respect to the makeup of the committee as well. The fourth requirement for Tree City USA is that there be an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. And apparently, you are to have already observed Arbor Day in order to apply. And I'm going to clarify that with the Oregon Department of Forestry to make sure. And I don't know if we have had the Parks Department do an Arbor Day observance at this point, but if they have, we could put that in the application. If we haven't, then we'll move forward with the tree committee anyway and get the ball rolling. So the way we've got the resolution constructed right now is that we make reference to the four standards. And we are assigning, let me pull the ordinance out. We're resolving that the first, the membership of the Oregon City Tree Committee would be comprised of the Planning Commission members. And that the first task of the tree committee should be to establish a working group to plan, organize, and celebrate Arbor Week in Oregon City, April 5th through 9th, 2010. And that the tree committee shall develop procedures and bylaws for approval by the City Commission at a date to be determined. And if you have any further questions about the program, I'd be happy to try to answer them at this point. There's a lot of information in that packet.
I've got a couple of things.
Yeah.
Just backing up with the Tree City USA, so tell me a little bit more about this. So this is kind of the leading advocacy group, it sounds like, across the US. And I know of a lot of cities that are members of this, and it's great. Is this considered a strong stance on trees? Is this considered a moderate stance on trees? I just want to know, what are we getting for these four standards that we meet?
What you would get if you are recognized Tree City USA is that you can qualify for matching grant programs to foster public awareness of tree programs, potentially have owner tree maintenance workshops. You can get help from certified arborists for programs. And you, of course, you've seen the plaques that you can get, which where you put in the right-of-way, recognizing the city as a Tree City USA. And as you move forward in the program, you can qualify for growth awards as your tree program gets, you know, runs longer and gets more well-established. I think we've already had significant help from the Department of Forestry with the crafting of ordinances and guidance on what makes an effective tree ordinance. And we could expect to get that sort of thing in the future as well. But I think the strength of the program lies in the degree to which the city moves forward with some of the program elements as you are established. So this is the first step.
So in the world of planning, you guys are professionals at, went to school, you know, study, this is your career. So in the world of planning, this is considered a really strong program? This is a good smart growth idea? A good livability, you know, a good livability thing to be a member of? I guess that's what I'm getting at, is like, are we, you know, fitting in?
I think it functions in addition to and independently from any smart growth codes that the city is proceeding with, you know, in terms of your development code. The public recognition aspect of it is good because, you know, it makes visitors and tourists aware that your city is enrolled in this program and takes it seriously. And it is vetted by, you know, the community at large. So you do have to maintain that expenditure over the time. So you have to keep submitting information that shows you're maintaining compliance with the standards. And we feel that, you know, essentially, we're doing a lot of the same things that already qualify for this program, but the important thing is that we get into the system and receive the recognition and the help and potentially the grants for the work that we're already doing. So, yes, as a planner, I think it's an important recognition.
Okay. And along with this, then, are there, you know, as we develop our code, are there other model cities that we can be looking at now that we're sort of a part of this so that we can kind of see how they're doing it?
Yeah, there are a variety, and they vary in size.
Yeah, okay. Another question, the standard three, the $2 per capita thing, is that a hurdle in the staff or the city's mind in terms, does that seem accomplishable? Or is that a hurdle? Is that?
Well, we've already been able to meet that $2 per capita. And that was, you know, by collecting information over the course of a week from the various There are an enormous variety of things which can qualify as expenditure, you know. I think the one that maybe we would concentrate on more in the future is public information and awareness and holding events, potentially with the help of our parks guys, because they are some certified arborists. And they can talk about how to go about proper pruning of street trees and things like that, how to properly plant trees and those sorts of things. So those are all programs that you can get assistance for through this program.
Yeah. I think it sounds great. I mean, I'm really all for this. What's really nice is I like how it actually ties in the tree ordinance into a bigger, a greater sort of thing. It's not just a tree ordinance that we're looking at. We're under a different, a little bit bigger umbrella and wider thinking kind of umbrella, which I really like.
Right. And it's evolving policy in many cities. I think the more that we learn about the economic effects of trees in our urban environment, the more sophisticated our codes become in recognition of that. We have several codes that deal with trees. We have our Development Review Codes, and then we have just our standard Public Street Tree Ordinance, which is in effect all the time. So both of those are important things to consider.
And I did have one last question. The Tree City USA, do they recognize when a jurisdiction takes on an ordinance that deals with both public and private ownership of trees? I mean, do they, or is it just public ownership?
They do recognize that. For example, they, I asked them if the expenses that are borne by private property owners in maintaining trees on private property are, you know, part of the canopy. And it is, because they're going to look at the overall urban tree canopy. The private tree canopy is a significant part of it. So any policies that deal with that are, you know, can be considered.
Okay.
As part of that. Primarily, if you have a public street tree ordinance and you have a department that administers that public ordinance, you can qualify for Tree City USA based on that alone.
Yeah. I think the education component of it would be helpful. When we updated the code this last time around, it just went into effect July 31st. Standards for replacement of trees, you know, before, when you did a subdivision, if there were trees located in a future road right-of-way, you know, so we've got a, for a local street, you've got a 53-foot right-of-way. And then you've actually got a 10-foot public utility easement on either side of that. So now, you know, realistically, you've got 73 feet where trees can be, could, previously could be removed with no replacement mitigation required. You know, with the update to the code that went into effect July 31st, now you're going to start seeing more, there's an actual replacement of those trees. As well as, you know, storm ponds went in. Before, that was considered a public utility. The storm pond was necessary to treat the public water from the new streets, and there was no mitigation required. But, you know, that's, but the flip side of that is when you build that storm pond, there are strict landscaping requirements associated with it. So there are trees being put back, but it's not accounting for the ones that are taken out, like a traditional one-for-one or based on diameter of tree. So with that update, there were several alternatives, you know, put back the total number of trees back on the site, you know. And that's above the requirement for the street trees. So you're required to put in one street tree per 35-foot linear foot of frontage. So then, any trees you take out is above and beyond that street tree requirement. So what you're seeing is, you know, in some of these more, you know, higher-density developments, you know, you're just, you're running out of room to be able to put tree, all these trees back, especially if you've got a heavily forested property. So, you know, one of the alternatives is to replace on-site, replace somewhere else in the city, or contribute to a tree bank, a monetary offsetting. And we have a number that is adjusted for inflation, and that's the number that we take. So if you've got 100 trees at $250, you know, that goes into the tree bank. So, you know, hopefully, if we can get this program running and through that public awareness component of it, you know, you could start seeing where we could start targeting areas for tree replacement, using some of these trees from the tree bank to get the neighborhood involved, to get some of these tree plantings going, you know, very similar to what you see in other neighborhoods where, you know, Friends of Trees come in and plant an area or those volunteer groups. You know, I think that would be an excellent product of being a member of this. Not that we couldn't do it separately, but this, it just helps to facilitate that.
Well, at our meeting with the City Commissioner, our work session where this came up, you know, the big concern was how do we get the public involved in that? And I think we're right on with this. I mean, this is definitely something that will get people motivated to take care of their trees, to participate in the program, to see that there's some benefit, far beyond just their own personal benefit or the city's benefit. But, I mean, overall, I think it'll be a good thing.
And hopefully, this at least generates, because you've seen with other jurisdictions as well as our own, when you start talking about trying to regulate trees on private property, you know, there's difficulties in trying to come up with, A, how do you implement it, and B, how do you pay for it? You know, there's a great deal of staff time that goes into trying to regulate trees on private property. But, you know, hopefully, down the road, this could act as a catalyst to begin that conversation. You know, if you can get support behind this and get an understanding of not only the ecological benefits, but the economic benefits associated with additional trees on property, and maybe we'll move towards some type of a tree ordinance, and it could become a priority. Because right now, what you have is, you know, let's just, you know, we're talking about coming up with a policy for trees for annexations. Okay? So let's just say it says, you know, if you clearcut your property within five years of annexation, we won't approve it, you know, or something like that. But then you get into the city, okay? And then, once you're in the city, you can remove your trees, because we don't have a tree ordinance. But if you submit for a subdivision, you've got to protect certain trees. But then, once the plat records and those lots become for sale to the private, you can remove the trees you've just protected. So we're moving there slowly, but there's still holes that we see at the staff level, but at the same time, recognize that making that jump to a citywide private property regulation of trees just isn't feasible at this time. But this is probably a good step to start moving in that direction. And the public education component is so important, the understanding. And then, maybe there's a grassroots support to address it.
Yeah, because I think 25 years from now.
We won't see anything really in the near future, but in 25 years from now, what did we leave? Is it, do we have a net gain, you know, or have we lost? And I guess, you know, our ordinance plus this, you know, Tree City USA, plus what we've already implemented so far, I hope all those things are, it sounds like all those things are heading us in the right direction. That's why I was sort of asking the question initially. Is this strong enough? Is it, is this a good enough tool? Well, I think there are cities where, you know, Wilsonville and Portland are a couple of examples where they have an urban forest management plan, which is reviewed by a tree committee. And, you know, it monitors the canopy. It looks back and says, we want to set a target for, you know, say 30% forest canopy in the urban area. If you look at the recent Audubon Society report, which was done with help from Metro, that, I think I emailed it to everybody, it's sort of a snapshot of the various urban forestry programs in the area. And Oregon City was at about 27% canopy, which is a pretty good number, but it's, you know, it's not as good as others. I think Lake Oswego has about a 40% forest canopy. And so they've done GIS, they've looked at aerial photography and done this analysis, and it's very interesting. It shows, and then it makes comparison to the policies that people have, what are the mitigation requirements in each of these municipalities and those sorts of things. Based on those, you can draw some pretty clear-cut ideas of where the policy gaps are and where they aren't. And we'll be looking at that in more detail as we have some further work sessions on the annexation policies in the future, on tree policies.
The other statement that I wanted to say, I want to make was, you know, I think it's a good idea to have the Planning Commission be initially part of this program. But I think, I think I'd like to see, you know, maybe we put a year date on it or something, where we start integrating more outside people. And I think there's a lot of people in the city that would be interested in serving on a committee like this that have more expertise clearly than I do as a Planning Commissioner. And I think maybe, maybe this is a discussion we have when we talk about the bylaws. But I think, I think we need to be, I think it'd be nice to be open to adding volunteers into the program. And maybe get to the point where we have a Planning Commissioner serving on that with five other citizens, you know. And maybe we have a neighborhood that is a healthy canopy and many historic old trees and have somebody from that neighborhood and things like that. I, you know, I just think that we need to get as much outside help and support as we can. I like the idea of, again, I like the idea of having the Planning Commission involved early on because we have the background on it right now.
Right.
So I'm no issue with that. I also like the idea that we're going to be able to get through this, we'll be able to get professional and expertise to be able to help us through some of the challenges that we face in making this a public process. So, yeah, it looks like a great program.
Right. And, you know, I anticipate that those changes will be something that we can review as we look at the bylaws and procedures as well. So we'll need to have another work session with you before we move forward to the City Commission with this resolution. And as I said, we've got some time here, so I think we should explore that.
I'm curious about how Parks and Recreation's been involved in the process that you've been involved with, Pete. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I had, you know, kind of a stack of papers when I went out and I collected information from each of the departments as to what they've been up to with trees. And so this worksheet number three, I sent a blank one of those to each of the departments, and they came back and they'd done various plantings as either in parks or along streams or as part of mitigation for slides and things like that. So they had accounted for that.
I don't know if I got them this.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So what I did, rather than give you all of those individual sheets, and I'd be happy to explain in more detail what those were, or send you an email with where those plantings occurred, I just put all the information into one spreadsheet for you. And it turns out that the total number of trees planted for the reporting period was 317 in 2008. This is pruned, number of trees pruned was 400, number of trees removed was 127. And then the various amounts that was spent on tree planting and initial care, community forest.
Where I was trying to go, Pete, was to follow up with Chair Powell's comment about, well, first of all, I agree that Planning Commission is ideally situated to be the tree committee when we initiate this ordinance. But Parks and Recreation has, I think, a better position for outreach to the general public in terms of putting on events. You know, I don't see that, I see that, you know, the community services function of the city has some advantages and probably has additional resources to put at promoting an Arbor Day Week or other public awareness events related to our Tree City USA status. Because the thing is, at the outset, what we want is public awareness of the trees, our tree canopy, and natural resources in general. And one thought is that the more city departments that we can, that are willing to be involved using, you know, staff that's available, makes more, just makes more sense to me. That way, there's not a specific fiefdom that has the tree hat, for example, but it's a true community organization, and it's supported by all branches of the city government.
Okay. Yep.
The other, to follow up on that, I think the other piece of this is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and have they been notified and do they, have they seen this? Because I would love to have the opportunity to let them see that before it goes before the City Commission. So if they have some suggestions at the hearing such as that, they can say, hey, you know, we didn't know about this, but we think it's a good idea, and we're your Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I think that'll offer some value to the City Commission. I mean, I know we all want to do this, but it would be good to be able to get their input and even a letter from them stating their support. I think it's, I think it's critical. I mean, that's what they're there for.
From Prac? Okay. We'll do that.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so from us, you would like us to recommend this to the, or?
I would recommend that we hold off at this point, based on your suggestions.
Okay.
Because that may change the resolution.
Oh.
As far as the makeup of the committee. Right now, the resolution is written to be comprised of the members of this Planning Commission, so.
So the resolution is, initially, you can, but that can change, can it not? I mean, once the, once the committee's formed, the bylaws can be developed any way we want. So who cares? I mean, if it's in there and says, this is what we're going to do, that's fine, and we all agree that that's good for now. Once we develop the bylaws, then we can change that and say, you know, in the next, in the next year, two years, whatever makes sense.
That's true. That's the way a number of committees work.
And I don't, and I don't see, you know, I've read this resolution a couple of times, and I don't see anything in there that would stop us right now from approving this, approving this and sending it forward. I mean, is it really up to you? I'm fine with your suggestion, but.
I'm curious, is the reticence to move forward just that the Parks and Rec Department is not on board yet?
Primarily because it hasn't been run by the Prac.
I wonder if it would make sense for that group and our group to get together.
In a work session. Pardon?
Yeah, I think we need to wait to have their input before we can make this resolution.
Yeah.
I would say, yeah, what about a joint work session with the Prac group? Would that be, would that be worthwhile, I guess is my question to you all.
Well, here's what I guess my suggestion would be. Yes, it would be, I think. Maybe we talk to Prac, or, you know, have it through you guys, through staff, talk to Prac and see if they want to do that. Or if this is going to be a slam dunk for them and they don't need to talk to us, you know? No sense in having a meeting if we don't need to, but I'd be more than willing to meet, to talk with them, have a joint meeting. We haven't, which would be nice to do at some point, but.
Yeah, I mean, if the purpose of having members of the Prac on the committee is to be involved in the functioning of the committee or to be involved in a working group to, just to do Arbor Day celebration, which is a very specific thing, I think those are the, those are the questions that we'd need to answer.
I would, I would frame it more as to facilitate the public outreach, because what we're talking about is the public awareness aspect of this.
In that case, I would recommend holding off on the resolution until we've run it by the Prac and see if they want to be involved in more, in more detail with the activities of you. And it will help you craft the bylaws and procedures for the committee.
Well, I guess there's two, that's, there's two things here. One is this, is this to send forward to the City Commission. I like their input on this and if they think this is a good plan. If they'd like to move forward with this. I don't, whether they, whether they're a resource or not, at this point, I think it's a moot point. I just, I'm interested in their feelings about this, if it makes sense. Because quite frankly, I mean, they're intimately involved with this way more than I am. So that part is why I like to get their input. From then, when we start working on the bylaws, absolutely, I'd like them to be involved so that we can integrate them then, at that point, in developing if it's, if we use them as the resource, you know, for citizen involvement or however it works. I don't necessarily think I should tie this up.
I agree with that. And I think that that expedites this process. The question that's framed to Prac is, is this a good way to move forward?
The question that's framed to Prac is, is this a good way to move forward? And then to deal with the roles and responsibilities issues when the bylaws are, are developed. I, I agree with that, with Chair Powell on that. Okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
Very good. So we'll let you go take that to Prac and see what it comes of it.
Will do. Thank you.
And we'll probably see this at the next meeting, maybe?
Yeah, I think we'll probably, we could.
You'll have to check, I think Prac only meets once a month.
Once a month.
So we'll see if they're meeting, trying to work that out. We'll, we'll keep you up to date on the level, bring that back.
Okay, and if they feel like they need one of us there, let us know. We'll see if we can get our representative there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thanks for all your hard work, appreciate it. It's an exciting opportunity, I think. Okay, next, Oregon City Sign Code, chapter 1528, 20.
So, I think we, I had kind of brought forward that we were going to be bringing a couple of issues before, you, Sign Code, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Area, Urban Rule Reserves. What had happened was, city commission had initially directed us to bring urban rule reserves back to a work session, which was going to be tonight. Subsequently, that's changed and they're requesting a joint work session so that everyone can sit down again together. So we, we pulled that at the last minute. So I think last time I told, talked to you, we were going to have the Sign Code, we were going to bring that back in September and I was going to do some more research on other cities and whatnot. So just because of the timing, I wasn't able to do all the research I needed to do to get that to in a timely manner. So this is going to be more of, you know, we've been talking about signs for multiple years now and I know commissioners have some thoughts and insight and concerns and parts of the code they like. And so I think we'll start with, what I'm envisioning is trying to get just some general ideas and guidance to kind of direct me in creating this, you know, some of the general policies we're going to shoot for if we try and rewrite this. Because what I, what I want to try and do is, is get that, some of that direction, but keep it broad and open and not get too caught up in the details yet. Because I think, you know, in order to make this a successful sign code that has community support, I think we're probably going to need, and what I'm proposing to do is put together a work group of, you know, community members, business members, other committees to try and come up with a code that, you know, hopefully we can get consensus on, but make it a little bit easier to implement. So when you, you know, you know how signs, you know, they're an important part for our businesses, they're important for advertising, but, you know, you balance that with what folks have for, for livability, walkability, size of signs, location of signs. You know, some signs may be appropriate in some areas of the city or zones where they're not appropriate in others. And I think those are bigger discussions that I don't want to get too far ahead on until we have a full group. But I know that there're probably going to be issues that we're going to want to talk about. So I think, you know, I'm going to kind of go through and identify the, some of the things we see as staff and some of the issues that, you know, I want, hopefully you'll think about as we're trying to craft this. And if, and obviously, you know, if there's more issues you've identified when you reviewed it, we'll add that to the list. And I think that, that would then give us a good starting point to kind of focus this group on what the issues are we need to address and hopefully from that, we can come up with a comprehensive update.
So you're suggesting this would be the first of several different work sessions with multiple different groups?
Yeah.
One suggestion that comes to mind is, is kind of a qualitative slideshow that, that could be given in, in one or more of these forums, perhaps a, a joint forum of these groups. And the candidate slides would be solicited from the community in general and maybe categorized. And, and, or not categorized, but the slide, the slides would be the focus of a discussion about what the community likes and, or what the community doesn't like, about what we see in these pictures. And these pictures could be pictures from around our town or from other towns of examples of, of good ways to implement sign policies or, or ways that sign policies weren't implemented and, and the result was what you see in that picture. So just a suggestion of, of a tool that we might use moving forward with this process.
Good idea.
And, and while you're doing that, it'd be interesting to kind of focus it in two, two directions. One, because we're, because we're a split city, it'd be nice to see both the historic evidence of signage, you know, in historic towns and traditionally historic towns, whether it be mining towns or older towns and see, you know, how things are done and then, you know, and maybe on the east coast versus west coast, I don't know. And then maybe something else more on the commercial side that, that would be good and bad. I mean, we kind of see what we have here, some are great, some are not so great. What does an abandoned sign look like? You know, I mean, so. That's a good suggestion.
And I guess the thing I'd add to it, which is exactly what they're saying is, is, you know, we're going to go into how big it can be and how, what, how wide and how tall, we're going to get into all that. But I think when you read through this whole thing and we see the results of our sign code over the last, you know, 15 or 20 years, to me, it, it does come down to a qualitative problem. You know, we've got a quantity and big, it's too big, it's too flashy, too shiny, whatever, we got all that. And, and we'll get into that, but there's a qualitative part that we need to put our finger on that I think this is the time to do it. And, and I think there's some real key areas too that link the top to the bottom where we've create mixed use districts where, what does that mean now? This seam between areas, so.
And, you know, I will give you the attorney speak, which is, you know, the trick is to be able to write a sign code devoid of the content. Okay, so it is strictly size, you know, I mean, you can be very prescriptive, but it can't be based on what's being advertised. So that's where you get into trying to take that qualitative component and putting it into a clear objective.
I get it. I guess what I'm thinking is, is, you know, what are other model little cities or towns or whatever, you know, little coastal towns along Oregon that seem to have a certain character to them and they seem to have captured it even with their signs? And they did it under Oregon State statutes as well. So how, how do they do it? You know, out to Bend, and when you go into certain parts of Bend, it's great too. So how do they do it? You know, so that's kind of what I'm getting at with the character with, you know, that I think we can get both somehow.
Well, and I guess that's just it. How do you, our, our first statement here, number one, says allow those signs compatible with the character. I mean, how do you define that? And that's what we have to define. And how do you define it? That's a, it's a good point, but it's something that we, that's, I think our big issue and has been for, since I've been on this board is, is, you know, how do we, how do we manage this when people come before us and want to put up a sign? We have, there's no, there's no teeth in it, whether it's in a historic district or whether it's not, or whether it's a school, or whether it's a county building. You know, we have no, we have, don't have a lot of teeth in it.
Correct.
And I, and I understand the legal speak and I do understand that people have their fundamental rights and I completely understand that. But on the other hand, I also know that there's a, an overriding need of a community.
Certainly.
To have something that fits within the character of their community.
Right. And, you know, that's the one thing I was going through and you're kind of talking about the different zones of the city, just like you see in different zones of other cities. You know, we've got, we've got Kanema, we've got McLaughlin, we've got mixed use downtown, you've got mixed use corridor one, you've got mixed use corridor two, you've got commercial, you have properties on 99E or properties along 205 or visibility from 205. You know, do all those, you know, should those, and this is where we start, is should those be, be sectioned off where different standards apply in different sections of the city? Or, you know, do we try and create one blanket code for the city? You know, and I'm, and so that, you know, that's where we start, you know? Right now, we've kind of lumped everything together. You know, we kind of lumped residential and then we lumped commercial and industrial. So we've really only got two real sections for the city and it's kind of one size fits all.
Yeah, and I think that's the real problem is, is then you don't get districts, then you don't get character, you don't get pockets of something with peculiarity. You know, it's just a massive, same thing goes all over. So, you know, that's where I'm at with it, for sure. We're going to need to break it down.
My bet is that when you start researching it and where you'll find that that's probably exactly how they do it, you know, is break it into districts.
Right.
And control that through, through the zoning.
And I think we've, you know, through the zoning code updates we've done in 2004 and then again in, in just recently, you know, we've added a little bit more, we've added more zoning districts that are tailored to certain areas to accomplish certain goals, whether it be mixed use downtown, where we're really striving for, you know, mixed uses and a little higher densities, more of a pedestrian environment. Then you got MUC one going up Seventh Street, you know, same concept of more towards the pedestrian, trying to create that transit corridor. And then you get into mixed use two, you know, where you're allowing a little bit more bigger footprints. Then you get into commercial where, you know, it's the traditional commercial zone. So, you know, right there, you've got, you know, four, four distinct zones trying to accomplish different objectives. And then you also put on top of that, you've got a historic district or conservation district. So yes, I, I agree. I'm not sure that the, kind of the simplicity we, we have in our code right now really does justice to where we move updates and where we're trying to move with other aspects of our code and really targeting those areas for a certain type of development. I think we'll just start, if you don't mind, I highlighted some things and we can start there. Feel free to jump in anytime. You know, the first page, the purpose and scope, then we walk into definitions. And let me just read you on the second page of the definitions, it, it's signs, okay? Signs means any sign, display message, emblem, device, figure, painting, drawing, placard, poster, billboard or other thing that is designed, used or intended for advertising purposes or to inform or attract the attention of the public. And the term includes the sign structure, display surface and other components, parts of a sign. When dimensioned the sign are specified, the term includes panels and frames and determines the both sides of a sign, a specified dimension or a display surface area. And so what we see is, you can drive through Oregon City right now and, you know, Clerkham Community College, they have a very nice monument sign off of 213 and off of Beaver Creek, well done, well maintained. And yet it has flags on it, banners on it, you know. So, you know, I think we need to kind of discuss, you know, is a, is a banner that's, that's just red with no writing on it, you know, is that advertising? Is a banner that says Clerkham Community College advertising and should it be regulated? These are some of the things we run into because, you know, technically the way this is written, we're not supposed to allow them. And yet we see them throughout the city. So, you know, I think we need to make that decision whether this is something we try and phase out and just say, yeah, we don't think they're appropriate or, yes, under these prescribed conditions, they can be integrated into a sign. So that's one thing we run into regularly. You know, it's hard driving through the city and you see these things and, you know, code enforcement, just, we just don't have the ability to go after every one of them. We are driven via complaints. So, so there's a little disparity there. We also, on the next page, 1528050, we talk about prohibited signs. And 1528050, very bottom of the page, sub C, a sign that contains, includes, or is illuminated by any flashing or revolving, rotating or moving light or moves or has any animated or moving parts. And what we've seen is, a lot of these new signs for, you know, at a gas station, for example, where, you know, traditionally you went out and you, you changed the gas price by hand. And so we've seen now where we've put up signs that, that are LED lit. And one of the conditions of that sign permit is that it can't be changed more than once a day. So it's not like a reader board where you've got, you know, this on sale at 999, this on sale at 520, you know, just constantly going by. But, you know, but, you know, is this something we want to address, you know, as technology has changed? But at the flip side of that is, you could potentially end up with an, you know, LED TV screen up there flashing commercials. You know, so, you know, technology has kind of outpaced our, our code, but at the same time, is that a direction we want to go or are we comfortable saying? You know, and, and I guess it comes down to too, are you comfortable with the signs going up that do, that are LED lit? It is a sign type it is used, but, you know, the regulation of it of, you know, are we really going out there and making sure it's not changed more than once a day? No, but for the most part, you know, you know, Walgreens hasn't, doesn't have a rotating sign up there with signs right there at Malala and Warner Millie, they've been very good about complying with that. The school district out on Beaver Creek Road used an LED sign and, you know, they, they, from what we've seen, you know, you don't have multiple things flashing up there for events. They've been, they've been, they've been very good at, at complying with that request. But, you know, it's maybe it's, I think it's something that just needs to be discussed because, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks are, a lot of businesses are moving in that direction just because of, you know, being able to change that inside, not having to send someone out there with a 15-foot pole to start pulling off placards, putting new ones in and that kind of situation. Under prohibited signs on the next page, sub G, portable signs, A-frame signs, sandwich boards, tent signs, streamers, strings of lights, balloons, hulas, banners or pennants accepting traditional holiday decorations. Once again, we've been working with the Public Works Department and you may have noticed some A-frames going up in the public right of way. So we have started to allow that. We, we've noticed that there've been several going up throughout the city, so that was an attempt to try and address, to at least try and regulate those signs going up. Because technically they are put in the public right of way, whether it be on the sidewalk or in the planter strip. But, you know, this is a, the discussion we need to have, is, you know, is an A-frame sign acceptable in certain areas where we want pedestrians, where we're going to limit their sign height or their sign size or, you know, is it something we, we stick with and we just say, we're not comfortable having them? What we've done is, you know, you need to pull a right of way permit, you need to get signed off by a Public Works Department. The right of way permits are good for one year, so they, they are reviewed and need to be updated regularly. So it's not a permanent situation that we've created, but as an interim, we've had several requests for them and this is a, we're trying to address that, where we are seeing them pop up and.
And where it becomes an issue to me is, I, I don't, I understand because it really, that kind of gives, it gives a little charm to a historic area. And, but when you go on Seventh and Madison or Seventh and Monroe, you know, there's, there's four of them lined up right in a row and they're blocking the, the public art, they're blocking the public right of way. And, you know, you can't read them anyway. So, you know, that's, I think you can, I think you can regulate them to some degree and say, you can only have one per block, one per facing, one, what's something like that and control that.
Tax slot.
To one per tax slot, yeah. And, and I don't know, I think that, you know, and then control the height of it. If it's, if it's a visual low enough, it doesn't block traffic and that type of thing, I think we can, I think it adds, in some cases, it adds a lot. Now, in other situations, you know, driving up Malala or whatever, you know, I don't, I don't know that that's necessary.
Right. And I can, you know, I can agree, kind of like what we're talking about, mixed use downtown, MUC one, where we're really striving for that pedestrian environment, they, they could potentially serve a great benefit. You know, it's, it's not tailored to try and catch the attention of the car, you're right, because of the size of it and whatnot, but at the same time, if you're walking by, it's a great information tool.
Are fees currently collected for these A-frame signs or the sign permits?
It's, it's a, it, there's a nominal fee associated with pulling a right of way permit, yes, yeah. And then we do, we do charge fees for a sign permit. It's a, now it's a, it's a fee plus a percentage of the construction cost of the sign. And that is actually, that permit is good indefinitely, or as long as that sign is up. So we don't have a requirement to come in and renew. What we do have is if you do a change of copy or increase the size of the sign, decreases, then you've got to come in and get a new permit. But if you've got a signed permit, it is in effect until a change is made to it. And we've actually, you know, when I started here about nine years ago, we did it all, we had binders of books and we just put the sign permits in. So since I've started here, I'm, I'm very confident that we have all the permits that have been issued back to when I started. And then we transitioned into, when we went to our Eden system for our building permits and planning permits through the computerized, through the computer, we've, we've given them actual building permit numbers that are in the computer. So we, we can, we can track it pretty well back to about nine years ago. Before that, you know, it gets, there's probably some gaps in some of the information. And that kind of goes to the whole, you know, we've got a policy in here from 94 when this was rewritten concerning amortization of signs and removing signs and whatnot that was never, we never did. So that would go into kind of discussion of, is amortization and removal of illegal signs something we want to pursue as part of this code change? And we, it was adopted in 94, have 10-year amortization on that, and then we're supposed to start removing signs that didn't conform with the code, it was, it was written in 94 and we just, we haven't done that. we just, we haven't done that. And so, it's a discussion of, is that something we really want to do? And if we are, are we actually going to follow through, or are we going to kick it out another 10 years from whenever this one goes into effect? You know, I think those will be some discussions we'll need to have later on. Next page is 1528075, signs for listed conditional uses in residential zones. And really, where you run into this is with schools. Pretty much all of our schools are on property that are zoned R-10, R-8, or R-6 residential, and churches as well. And it just seems like we've run several variances for this requirement. So, you know, not that, you know, and maybe that's the route we stick with, you know, we stick within some type of a variance or adjustment process, or I just think we should maybe look at these and see if it, you know, if we want to kind of address some of these conditional uses, or if we single out, you know, a school or a church in those residential areas and come up with some way to address that so that you don't have to go through the adjustment process. But it's just something we continually see as a conflict with what they're trying to do versus what the zoning code allows.
Well, not only that, but if it's a conditional use and there's no teeth, I mean, there's no point in having a conditional use. I mean, they brought John McLaughlin sign to us, you know, and it's like, well, what are we going to do? I mean, you know, you don't have any basis for denying it, you know, really. And so, now, there's a John McLaughlin sign. And whether it's the right sign or the not, you know, we didn't have much, we had nothing, there was nothing really in the current sign code that would allow us to not have it. So, you know, whether it's a conditional use or not, I mean, I just, we have to have some teeth in it.
I think one thing, under 1528080, signs in office, commercial, and industrial zones, you know, this is where we kind of lump everything else. Number two talks about wall signs, so long as a permit is first obtained, is required by this chapter, and the display surface area is no larger than two square feet for each linear foot of the wall on which the sign is erected. It is a huge standard, and no one has ever come close to meeting it. It is very, very generous. I just think it's, might be something, might be something to look at. I'm not sure where the standard originally came from, but we'd probably do some research on that.
Well, nobody's...
Maximize it.
Jesus.
It's hard to find a building big enough to maximize.
Yeah, no kidding.
And then, one-ish, the next one will be the freestanding signs. It's done based on a frontage, so if you have 50 feet of frontage, you can have a sign that's up to 25 square feet per face. 50 feet of frontage to 200 feet of frontage, you've got a sign that can be 50 square feet, so 100 total with both sides. And then 200 plus, you can have up to a 150-square-foot sign, 300-foot total. And on the next page, you'll kind of see the breakdown in a table form. You know, this goes back to, um, you know, should there be different allowances based on location rather than just what your frontage of your property is? You know, you've got the Home Depot site, and you have visibility from 205, which is their main advertising, um, you know, is it appropriate there? You know, that's in mixed use downtown. And obviously, you know, when the rivers came in, you know, one of the requests was going to be for larger signs, both height and square footage. And so, I just, it's, it's, you know, something where we're trying to balance that, that large advertising sign on our, in our mixed use downtown or in our commercial district versus what we think is appropriate relative to the scale and the overall vision for that corridor. So, it's just probably one thing that's definitely going to come up when you start talking about size, height, square footage of signs. And we'll certainly have the research done as you've kind of discussed of other jurisdictions and what's appropriate, and try and address that because, you know, there are different circumstances in the city based on location. The next page, we have 1528090, not conforming signs and their removal, sub A. This is where we talk about the, uh, signs that aren't in conformance with this chapter, which was adopted via ordinance '94, 1027, and 1994, um, shall have 10 years to bring their sign into conformance with the code. So, it was kind of one of those things in '94, seemed like a great idea, kick it out 10 years. 10 years came and it just wasn't a priority to go and...
Right.
And identify all those signs in the city. And so, that's, you know, that's the hard part. Do you wait for redevelopment? Do you wait for a change, or do you try and force it through some set amortization time? And I think that'll be another issue that we need to kind of walk through and work through.
Yeah.
And those are the, those are the main highlights that I had identified that we kind of went into at the staff level when we review these.
The other question I had, or item that I think we probably ought to talk about is, not only in different, you know, districts or zoning categories, but I also think we need to talk about what type of sign can be allowed in that area and what that material is made of. I mean, is a banner really a sign? Or is a banner a banner and we don't allow banners? Or if we allow banners, do we only allow them at a certain place, a certain time? You know, because I think there's a benefit to the community in having banners stretched across for certain, for certain things. That would, to me, is a temporary sign as opposed to a sign. A-boards, I mean, are A-boards, what are they going to be made of? What are their size, that type of thing? Where can they be used? Where can't they be used? That's something we talked about. But I'd really like to define sign better than that, the way we have it defined. I mean, anything that advertises, that could be anything.
Yeah, it's hard to implement, honestly, especially when it talks about anything that's intended to draw someone to the business. Well, you know...
Right.
Our balloons.
Well...
Technically, we're saying no balloons, and, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what it says, and we need to decide, is that where we want to stay, or is it appropriate, or is it not, or, yeah?
Well, and I'd also like to get a little more teeth in an abandoned sign and what that really means. I mean, you know, here we did the whole Seventh Street corridor, we built all this, you know, 7-Eleven down there, and the battery exchange built these beautiful corners, and here, there's this big empty sign that's been sitting there for 10 years or more that has nothing on it. It's as abandoned as it can be, and it's still sitting there after all that work that the city did. Get rid of that. And to me, that met the code. We should have not kept that there. That should not have stayed there. But here it is, and it's sticking up, I would say, a thumb out of that beautiful planter. So, maybe we can, you know, identify what that, what that means, abandoned.
Right. And how we define it currently means a sign that does not have a copy on the display surface for a period of six months or more, including an obsolete sign, which is designed as, defined as, a sign that calls attention to a business or other activity or profession, commodity, product, service, or entertainment no longer carried on, produced, sold, or offered.
Right. And I could go around and point out all those kinds of signs in town, and you just, they're just eyesores, and that's where I think that's something that frustrates me is we've got these things that we have the code right now, we have a code that we can, that we can implement this, and we don't. You know, this big billboard right up across in the property where that Walmart was interested in, you know, that's been there forever and it's got nothing on it. I mean, that's a, that's an eyesore, you know, it needs to come down. But I also understand that there's a lot involved in, in code enforcement, and, but I think that's something we really, that would help right there, I think, a lot.
So, I guess I would open it up to the commissioners if there's anything that jumped out of them in the code or just general, you know, we kind of started at the beginning talking about what we see or what we would like to move towards, or at least review and do some homework on. Okay.
Mr. Stein?
No, I think the idea that you suggested of engaging different groups of people and coming up with the community sense of what good signs are is a place to start for me. Coming up to speed on what's in the existing code and then imagining the complexities of how you change something so that it, so that the new code truly addresses what our community vision is for what quality signs are in Oregon City. If we are going to be, you know, an historic destination city, that implies certain things with respect to these sign ordinance. So, I'm at the point where I'm just beginning to think about this, and I think that having this interactive process with different groups would be a good thing to get everybody on, at least in the same book, if not the same page.
Yeah, I'm a little leery of trying to craft, you know, it's kind of like, where do you start? You know, I just don't want to, you know, it's kind of like a map. Once it's shown on a map, there's this thought that this is the final product. And I think this, I think we've been wrestling with this for so long, and, you know, there's a lot of different stakeholders and views and pluses and minuses that I think it's better to start in big picture and then kind of find out what the issues of disagreement are, and then we can kind of focus on those, you know, because I think there's going to be a lot of agreement, and that's the easy part. It's just hammering out some of those details where I think, you know, doing it in a, where everyone understands what everyone's concerns or fears or desires are, and try and find the consensus through that process would probably be the most efficient and helpful way to do it.
Well, and we've got, I mean, we've got a chamber that could be an incredible resource as an interface to the business community. We have a downtown manager that would be, again, an incredible interface, who many of you may not have met him, pretty dynamic individual and can get down there and get some input from the downtown, the historical side of things, and know what they'd like to see. I don't necessarily think we need to open it to giant public hearings and at the senior center, but, I mean, I do think it's important that we get the business sense and the citizen sense and start work work.
Okay. Anything else to add?
Dan, any other things we missed there?
No, I think those are the high points for me. There was a bunch of, you know, obviously, when you look at the sections right now, you know, when they, when we even list the zones there, they're not even up to date.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's just a complete overhaul.
Yeah, it is. Like I said, we've made some, a lot of progress in the zoning code and just never opened this back up to keep up.
Okay. Well, let's do something to do.
Yep. So, I think I discussed earlier the joint PCCC Urban Renewal Lands Meeting. Right now, it's down to September 16th, which I believe is a Wednesday, and the alternative date would be September 15th, a Tuesday. And we're still, there's going to be a executive session on the 16th and then a work session. So, we're just trying to finalize times and what's going to be on that work session, determine if there's enough time on the 16th. So, I will forward an email to you with time, location, date, et cetera.
Thanks, Pete.
And then, another...
And you said that was urban renewal?
I'm sorry, urban rural...
Urban reserves.
Yeah, urban reserves.
That's what I thought, okay, thanks.
And then, on September 3rd, or, yeah, September 3rd, the city commission is going to have a work session where city attorney or the assistant city attorney is going to kind of discuss how staff reports are written and the findings that we make and the criteria that we apply and the manner in which we apply them and the findings and whatnot that we generate. So, that is a CC work session, but, you know, you guys deal with this very often, so if you wanted to, you know, it's going to be available via web stream, it'll be archived, or if you wanted to attend.
Oh, yeah.
We'll certainly keep you up to date on...
That's going to be an interesting one.
Any, any changes there.
That's what day, a third?
September 3rd.
And is that a...
I think that might be a Thursday. I think the first is a Tuesday.
At what time, do you know?
I do not have the time yet, but we can get that to you.
It's probably five o'clock, isn't it?
I, yeah, but I'm just not sure what's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's hard for me to make, five o'clock, but...
Yeah. Also, let you know, the Public Works Master Plan was appealed by the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and so we will be sending out notice of that. The city commission also voted to bring up the planning commission decision for review. So, you kind of have two separate processes there that we're still determining the best way to run that. You have an appeal, your traditional appeal, which is limited to the record that I saw and you saw as the decision-making body. It's limited to only those people who participated. So, if you participated either in writing or oral argument, you have standing, and so you are able to participate in an appeal hearing. And then, it's only, it's limited to the issues that are raised in the appeal. So, it's not opening the whole thing up, it's limited to, you know, transportation or, you know, only those issues raised during that appeal. And then, the second thing that occurred was that the city commission voted to bring up the decision. And that is what we call de novo hearing, which means the record is closed, but anyone can participate and any issue can be brought up. And so, what that means is, like, we focused on, we talked a lot about transportation and landscaping and like the fuel pumps, but if someone wanted to come and talk about the parking lot layout, you know, because that's in the record, that would be something that they can bring up. So, while we may not have discussed it at the public hearing, it's open because the city commission brought it up. So, you've kind of got two different processes that involve, you know, two different standards. So, we're going to work with the attorneys to get that notice out of exactly how it's going to state, and then we'll notify you of that hearing as well, since you were the decision-maker in that, in that application.
I've never, I've never heard of that.
It's, per the Oregon revised statutes, the final decision-maker, being the city commission, has the ability to call up any decision by planning commissioner staff.
Under what criteria? Any criteria they want?
They don't have to...
Just because?
Yes. There is no, it's not like an appeal where they have to identify a finding that, or a code criteria, they can just bring it up under, it's a general view, there is actually, there's no just, there's no requirement for justification or rationale to bring it up other than just a review. The, we just received an appeal for the city hall site plan and design review, the new city hall down on, at the top of Singer Hill there. So, we went through a site plan and design review for parking lot, generator, and whatnot. So, that was appealed. Don't have a hearing, we just received that as well. So, we'll keep you informed as to that. That was a staff-level decision, it was a type-two decision for the parking lot redesign. And then, we just received the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, Luba decision, it was remanded back to the city. So, the attorneys are reviewing that, we just reviewed that this morning. So, we are, they're preparing a memo to the commission, and we'll forward that to you as well.
Okay. Well, somebody ought to look at how much does it cost us. You know, that's the, that's the thing that nobody looks at, and, you know, it's, you can do things over and over again, but sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't. But I'd like to see, I'd like to somebody to put a price on this and then go back and let's talk about where we're spending our money. But that's just my opinion. Very good, anything else?
We're probably going to get, as you may recall, we just went through the Cove Master Plan, Concept Master Plan, and we approved the detailed development plan for Phase One. They're going to be coming in to amend the master plan, so you'll probably be seeing that the second meeting in September, the first meeting in October. Other than that, no land use applications have been submitted, that'll be coming in front of the PC at this time. We've got the six-month update of the code that, you know, we passed that one into effect July 31st. I think we set a date, don't know off the top of my head whether it was December or January, to bring that back and just make sure we caught everything we needed to. So, we'll probably start working on that again. Other than that, we're just moving along. Some have, you know, starting to see an uptick in building permits for single-family houses, slowly starting to come in again. No real large subdivision, subdivision applications or site plan applications, it's still pretty thin out there. So...
Not surprised.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Any questions, anything from the commission? All right, well, thank you very much, Tony. We appreciate it. And so, our next meeting, as of now, looks like it's going to be the fifth, the meeting with the city commission on the 15th or 16th?
Correct.
For reserves, okay.
Yep, most likely. And then, you know, potentially, we'll have that... Yep, most likely. And then, you know, potentially, we'll have that second meeting in September, our normal fourth Monday. We might be able to get the Cove Amendment up here. Just depends, they're trying to have that application in this week, so...
Okay, good. Look forward to it.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.